Call the meeting to order. Ms. Tanner, will you please call the roll?
Basine.
Here.
Buffalo.
Here.
Inge.
Present.
Martin.
Present.
Thomas.
Here.
DeKalbajiro.
Here.
Move on to item 2.01, a discipline update.
And I'd like to welcome Ms. Hamlin and Ms. Plute up to present the latest discipline update for the board.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Ms. DeKalbajiro. Madam Vice Chair, Ms. Thomas, members of the school board, Dr. Poe, members of the public and colleagues. Today, Ms. Plute and I will provide an update of student conduct and discipline across the district. Our focus is on equity, consistency, and restorative practices while ensuring compliance with state guidelines.
Okay.
Discipline across the district. Our district-wide approach to discipline is aligned with the Virginia Board of Education's model guidance for positive and proactive code of conduct policies. We emphasize fairness, consistency, while prioritizing restorative practices over exclusionary measures. So our goal is not to suspend students. Our interventions are matched carefully with the student infractions, ensuring responses are proportional. Importantly, all decisions are data-driven and reported in compliance with the state. The disciplinary process pathway. So we've established a clear disciplinary process pathway that schools follow. So let's just walk through that together. So we have an infraction that takes place. It has to be determined whether or not it's a teacher response or an office response. So what is the teacher response? That's the classroom management. That's looking at maybe the setup of the classroom. We have, the teacher might have one-on-one conferences, conferences with parents, proximity, making sure that, you know, they are doing everything, redirection in the classroom. So the teachers are taking care of that. But if it's a serious infraction, if it's repeated violations or of safety concerns, then that becomes one that has to go to the office. The process must be given. So the student has to know the allegation against them, but also allow students to share their side of the story, their perspective. We perform thorough investigations, which means that we're going to collect statements from everyone that has knowledge of the incident. If it happened in the classroom, then the students in the classroom will be asked if they know anything about what took place. If it happened in the hallway, we're going to ask anyone that was in the hallway, students, teachers, security officers, anyone that has knowledge of that incident, to write statements. We gather the video evidence as well, and sometimes students will share even more information with us so that when they have trusted adults in the building, they will give us even additional information about a particular investigation. Then we decide on the infraction code. We match it with the code of student conduct to ensure that we have consistency across schools. We decide on the intervention or sanctions. So we have the Norfolk Public Schools level system. So for example, level one to two could be detention, restorative practices, loss of privileges. While levels three to four may lead to an in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension for one to 10 days, and that's done at the school level. It might be referred to tribunal. If it's referred to tribunal, then that could possibly lead to a long-term suspension or an expulsion. If a student has an IEP or a 504 that will exceed the 10 days of cumulative suspensions or they're being referred to tribunal, a manifestation determination review must be held. That's conducted at the school level. I just want to mention, I've said this to board members previously, that we also go an extra, while their MDR is held there. If it comes to tribunal, we also have our compliance team to kind of look at things to make sure that we are doing things in order. We contact the parents and we provide written notice. The narrative must tell exactly what took place, what the student, you know, is being charged with, the decision, and we also put that there's a right for an appeal. All of our incidents are entered into synergy. So we have documents of the incident, the findings, and the disciplinary action. If a tribunal is required, we give the schools a list of things that need to come to tribunal. It's not just for that particular incident. We ask teachers to give us feedback about the student because we want to deal with the whole child. We have the school counselors to provide information. We ask the schools to bring the cumulative folder because we want to make sure we know everything about that child. And sometimes we find things that are maybe a little surprised once we look at that cumulative folder. So the evidence that comes to tribunal has all the statements, videos, that kind of things. When the panel and the hearing officer have to make a decision, it's an informed decision based on everything about that particular child. If a long-term suspension or expulsion is determined, the hearing officer then refers the students to Madison, trade, or ACES. And I don't know if I've ever told you, but the ACES are elementary program. So we have supports at all levels. And so these are the students that are reflected on our monthly school board report that we discuss in close session. Individual school reports. Each school is unique. They have strengths and challenges. By reviewing individual school reports, we can highlight areas of success and identify where additional supports may be needed. This school-level analysis allows us to tailor interventions more effectively. Each school report is provided to the principal, the executive director, outlining discipline incidents, strengths, areas for improvement. This process allows us to identify patterns, respond early, and ensure accountability at both the school and the district level. Reports are provided throughout the year, but also in our trainings that we provide in the summer. Principals can also run reports in power school and in synergy. So they can run their own reports, but we do send them from our office as well. We're also able to meet with executive directors to look at numbers, percentages, and dig deeper when needed. Please note, you had some data that was uploaded for you. That information reflects the students, the percentage of students that have no incidents. So I thought that that was very positive, there are no incidents. So then the other percentage reflects those that might have one or more incidents. Student handbook transparency. Our handbook plays a critical role in transparency, and we're one of the few districts that put it all out there. We've even had our colleagues, like Ms. Plute and I both served on the state committee, and we had people that said, "Why would you put that information there?" Because parents do read our handbook, okay? And they know a lot of things, and so they want to make sure that they understand what to expect. So by having our policies clearly outlined and the level responses, staff, students, and parents know what to expect because it's all there. It's also updated annually. Now, we can tell you, that's a chore. It used to be mine, now it's Ms. Plute's. It doesn't always make you the happiest camper during the summer when you're trying to update it according to state and federal guidelines. It's easily accessible, so we ensure that it's communicated, it's inclusive communication. We have it in English and in Spanish. It's online and it's in print, and we provide copies of the in-print standards of student Trends across the district. So MTSS and PBIS serve as the backbone of our approach. MTSS is the multi-tiered systems of support. That framework includes academic behavior and social-emotional support, while PBIS is our positive behavior intervention support and its data-informed approach, which is in the MTSS system. Specifically focuses on organizing and implementing a continuum of evidence-based behavior supports and practices across the three tiers of intervention. And school wellness with Dr. Moore and Dr. Williams spearhead that for us. And we have a big committee that meets to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. And I have to tell you, today I was on the phone with the high school, and in the background, the principal was making the announcements for the afternoon, and I heard him say, and remember, "We're going to be responsible, respectful, and safe." That made me excited because a lot of times, you know, you know that the elementary principals, they do it a lot, but to hear the high school principal, that just kind of made my day, especially when we're having this conversation today. With universal supports for all students, targeted behavior, targeted interventions for those at risk, and individualized strategies for those who need intensive support is also a part of this because we want to emphasize prevention, equity, and positive student outcome. Our discipline data allows us to identify strengths and areas of concerns across the district. We analyze increases and decreases in infractions. We have a lot of conversations about that as we break it down by grade level and subgroups. And we also, it also highlights emerging patterns across the district. It helps us to adjust supports, target interventions, and remain proactive as opposed to being reactive. It also helps us to address systematic issues and measure the effectiveness of the interventions. I heard to one comment earlier about our administrator's guide. Well, this is a tool that is to ensure consistency in practices across the district. It's a tool that's unique to Norfolk Public Schools. Our administrator guide went from this to this now, but we put a lot of time and information so that we can make sure that our school-level administrators have what they need to, you know, deal with things across in their buildings. But we also shared it with the people in Region Two. So we were recently talking to someone in another district, and the one thing that they asked was, "Have you published your administrator's guide yet?" Because they wanted a copy. This resources compiles best practices, current policies, and key information in one place. It equips the school leaders to create a disciplined, safe environment while staying in line with the district goals of equity and student success. You might ask, well, how does the Department of Student Support Services support schools? We do it in multiple ways. We provide large group, small group, individualized training. We also make school visits. We have ongoing coaching that goes on all day, every day, where we are talking to schools. We give consultation by phone, email, and Zoom. We also share resources like Plute's News, and it has everything that you need to know in one place. When the newsletter goes out, it has links to all kinds of things. It's very informative, and I tell people all the time, if you keep Plute's News on your desktop, most of the things that you want to ask a question about is right there. She's done an excellent job with that. We also provide referrals when needed and legal guidance as needed. This ensures that, again, that they have the supports and tools they need to manage discipline effectively. We have suggestions for principals. When we meet with them in the summer, we have an annual meeting every year where we talk about discipline and make suggestions like having conducted, you know, the walk-ins, check-ins, walkthroughs, sharing best practices across the district. So we might have one school present something because of the way they did it was really positive. We had that this summer. You know, one school did a really good job of handling a situation. So it was very effective because people had an opportunity to say, "Wow, that was really good," and, you know, think about how that they can do sort of the same things. We offer professional development on trends. So when we look at trends, we try to bring things to our summer trainings and other trainings throughout the year that deal with the trends. Also, I've mentioned that we, you know, implemented MTSS, PBIS framework so that we have consistent systems. You have to look at all systems. It's not just, it's from the time the children pull up on the bus, get off, what happens in the parking lot, what happens in the hallway, what happens in the cafeteria. You need to analyze all of your systems so that you can make sure that the processes that you have in place are working for your kids. And so what might work over here may not necessarily work over there. So if you look at your individual systems, and it can give you a better idea of, okay, I need to change that, move that, that doesn't work, we get rid of it. So I just feel that that's very important to focus on. And this action helps to create a positive climate, and it reduces our exclusionary discipline. Again, our goal is not to put the students out of school, so we want to have things in place. In closing, our goal is to ensure discipline practices are equitable, consistent, and supportive of students. We remain committed to using data, restorative approaches, strong leadership collaboration to make this happen. And at this time, Ms. Plute and I welcome your questions.
More, Buffalo?
Yes, thank you for this presentation. I have a question. The discipline process pathway, I know putting incidents in synergy, for incidents to kind of go through the queue or the steps, but what if there is, are teachers able to put in synergy, not necessarily a referral, but just kind of document? Hasn't got to that point yet, but it's important to kind of record, you know, things that...
The teachers are able to put like the contact information in. They're able to, you know, not necessarily to discipline things, but the kinds of things that they're doing. There's room for the comments and notes.
Okay, so that's what, so if you have to go back, if something occurs, and you have to go back and say, see some kind of history of an incident or something building up, there's a place in synergy where they could put notes?
There are things for teachers, and then there are also for the office. And so there may be times that it may not lead to a disciplinary sanction.
Right.
But it's noted in synergy, and it's for the same reason that you expressed, that you're saying, "Oh, this is the first time," when it's actually the third. Yeah. So sometimes teachers put things in, and they can use it as they're supporting information, but then at the same time, we can put things in synergy that didn't have any discipline, but it does document the behavior.
That's, that's. I'm glad to hear that we're collaborating with other school divisions in our region because our kids, we do know that we're so close together. Our kids, you know, transfer in and out to our neighboring cities, so it's good that we're collaborating with other school divisions to see what they're doing and their processes and how we can implement them, or they can implement ours too for around student discipline.
I think we're lucky to be in Region Two because we are a very close region, and we do share a lot. It's not like you're trying to say, "No, we're going to keep this so we can be the best." And so we're very happy about that. And we were happy when we served for years with the Region Two people. We still meet, but our state, we also served on the state committee as well, and it was nice to hear what other people were doing across the state.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. I have a few questions. If we could go to slide three on the, about the pathways in particular. So you talk a lot about restorative practices and, you know, other interventions. Can you, in this pathway process, can you explain exactly at what point those practices are employed?
The whole thing about, you know, restorative practices or anything along the pathway is not, so I always say that our goal is not to suspend. So you want to do everything, and if you look in the administrator's guide as well as in our student handbook, there are a lot of things that can take place prior to a referral being written. So those are the things that we would expect, even at the teacher's level, it gives quite a few things that you can do. So before we even get to the referral, and one thing that we say all the time is that we need to tell parents right away. And, you know, sometimes that's not done until it's, you know, more serious. And so then, you know, everybody's kind of caught by surprise, but if we're working with kids along the way and we're making sure that we have those conflict mediations, we're trying to, you know, get children to see your behavior hadn't impacted me. When I was an administrator, I would always talk about, you know, "Wow, what just happened out there? You know, it wasn't just you, it was other people around, it was me. I don't like sitting here having this conversation. You know, what can we do better?" So I think that there are opportunities throughout for us to, you know, to have those teachable moments and intervene as early as possible. So if we start seeing patterns with a particular student, that needs to be done right away.
Okay. So with, with the restorative practices with PBIS and any other tier-one supports, it's like, how are you tracking, or at the school level, I mean, not you personally, but how are you, how is it being tracked what's working, what's not working when it comes to those interventions before the referral is?
So, you know, again, that's why it's so important to have the collaboration in the schools so that everybody's talking to each other. You're having, you know, you're pulling your discipline data or looking at the discipline data and seeing what the trends are, seeing what people are doing, looking at a hotspot. You know, are we getting referrals from a particular place in the building? Is that somewhere we need to pay more attention? I mean, it even breaks down to referrals from a certain class. I mean, you might have a student, I mean, a teacher who writes referrals constantly, so that might need to be, you know, another thing that we look at, the observations, the walkthroughs, just to get a clear understanding of all the dynamics that's going on with students. And also, when all of us know the same child, then we probably need to have some things put in place to really help that child before they get to a point where they're getting referrals against and spending constantly.
So when we send the data, you know, we, I always encourage the principals, administrators to sort it and look for specific things, and they do an excellent job. I specifically make sure it has location. Let's sort it by location because we need to see where our hotspots are, where we don't have cameras. We need to be watching that and coming up with a plan. We can sort it by, you know, location, teacher, like you said. We're just looking, we're hoping that the administrators look for the trends that are like a problem in their building, and they're coming up with a plan. So in synergy, when we log an incident in, there is a place, it's our S-bar interventions, that's how we're reporting things to the state. There are several, you know, interventions and behavior interventions that we check that they're supposed to check that they do. All of that is reported to the state, so that is a way we can track it too. With every incident that we put into synergy, you know, we kind of require that parent contact needs to be checked. If anything was serious enough to put in synergy, which means it's going to stay in a student's permanent discipline history forever, then a parent needs to have been contacted. So number one, always and every incident, parent contact should be checked. So if a student, if the IEP has to be revisited, like I said, there's several that are listed, you know, in your handbook or in the admin guide, they're supposed to check that too. That's a way to track it. Now, the data that we send, we want them to sort it and look for everything. You know, anything in the building. If the dismissal's not right, if your referrals go high up at from 2:00 to 2:30, and that's your dismissal time, please, what are we doing now to curtail that? So we just provide it so that they can sort it, and every single building is different because it depends on where they're situated. Neighborhood schools have different problems than Lake Taylor High, for example. They're out there by themselves. So we basically ask them to check and monitor, and we just provide the data, provide the data, provide the data.
Great to know. I have a couple, a couple more questions on that. So I appreciate that. So also, you talked about at the end, you know, working with principals and the information that, so that data is going back to principals to then develop what their response plan is going to be. And can you talk a little bit about, or Dr. Poe, I don't know, about how, you know, our principals are also being held accountable for ensuring that, you know, MTSS and other measures are being implemented as they're supposed to be? Is there, is there a mechanism?
We're student support, and so we're going to defer to Dr. Poe.
Well, that's why I was, I started to say Dr. Poe, but, you know.
Yeah, so that, you know, that comes into the evaluation process as well for principals and assistant principals. And then it's also a discussion point with the data meetings that they have to talk about how are they using this data to find the hotspots, especially if discipline is a concern in the building. But those, those data points are looked at by the executive directors when they do the evaluation for principals.
All right, thank you. And I do appreciate the school-by-school information, data that you provided. And the last question I have is, you know, clearly there are, you know, schools where we see higher levels of incidents, and those who tend to be, you know, sitting, having sat here for quite some time, see the same schools with the same level of incidents. How are we, I guess, you know, what are, what are we going to do differently in terms of resource allocation to enhance our ability to provide, you know, the appropriate interventions for our students, particularly at those schools where we see, you know, greater level of out-of-school suspensions or things like that?
So budgetarily, you know, we're, we're pretty maxed out right now, but as we go through the consolidation process, that's part of the discussion is, you know, where the academic needs and where the, like, the SES needs or the student intervention needs for discipline and other SEL reasons, to make sure that we're putting the right supports there. If it's an extra school counselor, you know, extra security to be in places where we notice there are hotspots that you can't really monitor with cameras, that those are things that we'll be able to do in the future, once, once we have some, some more free staff.
Questions, Mr. Inge?
Yes, I think it's maybe a question for you or maybe a question for Dr. Poe, but we'll figure out who needs to answer it. So the question I had, I looked over the spreadsheet with the data for the high schools. So my question is, I saw that y'all track a lot of data, but you don't track any race, ELL, and, oh, you do? We just input it?
So, yes, we have that information, and if it's requested, we can provide it, but we do have it.
Let me, let me clarify that a little bit. So we, we knew that was a desire of the board, but when, when we reviewed this before the upload and we looked at it, it was spread out by every single incident as well, so I asked them to narrow that down some more. So we will have that to be able to email out to the board because we do track that by, by demographic as well.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. So because I didn't figure we needed the one-day OSS by demographic, two-day OSS by demographic, and it was, it was so massive.
Right, and I appreciate you doing it that way.
So, yeah, so we do have it.
Just so you know, the schools, when we send out that data, that's exactly what we ask for. You know, we send everything from ethnicity to grade level, to 504, to special ed. We want them to sort it. I mean, even the date of birth, let's sort it by date of birth and see who are overaged, especially in high school, there's the first ones we need to hit in terms of providing especially in high school. Those are the first ones we need to hit in terms of providing resources or, you know, supports if they're older. But all of that is also in what we send to the schools. So we do expect them to, you know, look at their disproportionate amounts of suspensions they're doing based on race, special ed, 504. So it's not just location, it's everything.
Yeah. With that, because that's, I'm so glad that you brought that, you led me to what I was going with. Studies show that African-American students are actually getting a higher disciplinary rate than their counterparts. And so that's data I would like to see at the school level. And then also, if there is showing a disparity in that, what are some of the things that the school system are doing to ensure that discipline is fair and equitable across the board regardless of who that person is, where they live, or the race and color of their skin?
Yeah. So a big part of that are the three main areas that you heard Ms. Hamlet talk about. One, our MTSS planning. So we get down to the individual student level on that. And then the PBIS program, trying to, to, to catch it before it even gets to be a disciplinary incident. And then the other is the restorative practices. And, you know, the restorative practices, Ms. Pessine, to your question earlier, you know, it does come early, but it also comes very late in this. You know, when students come back, if they've done something, it's about how do we reintroduce them back? You know, even from a day or two OSS or even from ISS, and they're going back to that teacher's classroom where the teacher, you know, and them had the conflict, how are we making sure that we're, we're restoring it back to what it needs to be? So it's throughout here, that practice. And, and looking at that type of data, student by student is the best way to, to get to that, any discrepancies that we find in that data.
Second question, what are mental health and behavior supports are available for students before they actually reach the disciplinary stage?
The school wellness takes care of a lot of that. But I can tell you that one of the things that we worked to get in place was Care Solas, where you can refer the student, their families, anyone that needs that extra support. Our school-
What is Care Solas?
Care Solas is a company, it's like a soft handoff. And they contact to make sure that they're providing whatever needs that family or student might have. Yeah. And then also, I mean, I think, I think our school counselors and our school social workers do an excellent job as well in getting there. And I, I can't tell you that we did have a big meeting this morning. And we're looking at, you know, other ways that we can support children as they move in and out of our schools, going to Madison, coming back, going to, you know, other places and coming back. That we have a clean way of making that transition so that we're welcoming those students back into the zone, school of the regular environment.
I have a litany of questions, but not all of them. Go for right now, madam.
It's ACES. I got the ES part. Okay.
I was going to ask that question.
Alternative Classroom for Elementary Students.
A who did the what?
Alternative Classroom.
Alternative Class.
ACES for elementary students.
For elementary students.
Okay. We, we're good in education with acronyms. And I know somebody out, out watching, and what does that mean? Okay.
Maybe that's what we need, another book just for educational acronyms.
Exactly. Thank you.
So ACES is held at crossroads.
Okay.
Dr. Nichols has been fabulous and has welcomed the alternative program to be in her building. And the teacher who is in charge of that class is phenomenal. So, you know, the kids generally, if we have any elementary school kids that unfortunately have to be long-term suspended and have to go there, I mean, typically they do not, I mean, they just say, can I stay? Can I stay? Can I stay?
So she's got a, the teacher has a classroom with all K-5 students?
But, I mean, we're talking, it's, I mean, less than five, typically a year.
Oh, okay.
That's very few.
Very few. We just, we did need something because every now and then we have one. So it's never had more than five, I don't think.
I'm sorry, Ms. Wolf, I just want a clarification.
To even for those students to get there because, you know, basically our law says that, you know, students K to three, you know, can get up to three days, they have to have aggravating circumstances for it to be big enough for them to receive a long-term suspension. So our numbers in that classroom are very low every year.
At one point, did this program come back? Because years ago, it was, I think it was at Granby Elementary School.
So that was, that was your chrysalis program?
Yes.
Okay. And so that went away, but we realized that we still had to have something for our children. So at one point, we had the city divided up in four quads. And so there were certain schools that housed the children that might need to move from a particular elementary school to another. But ACES has been in place for quite a few years now. And as Ms. Plute said, Dr. Nichols has been phenomenal. And she welcomes the kids in and makes sure that they get all the things that they need when they come, you know, if they need extra help in reading or math. All those things are mapped out. So it has been very successful. And as she said, most of the time, they're like, can I stay?
It's good to hear that we have some kind of a program like that for small kids. Good, yeah.
And we're one of the few districts that does.
I don't know if you could speak to what our in-school suspension program looks like. And also, do we have in-school suspension? Well, I want to call it something different because it's, I know, it's, I think it's something more aspirational than in-school suspension. So, so excuse me for, I mean, I know that's the official terminology for it, but do we have ISS monitors in, in, or teachers? I don't want to say monitors, but teachers in every elementary, middle, every school building?
Not elementary.
It varies from school to school. Again, our staffing has been cut a lot of times. So some schools have figured out how to have in-school suspensions, and they do it different ways. You know, there are certain staff members that may float between two elementary schools that are supposed to hold it. But if that was something, that's something that we can really like improve on is to try to find a way to have it so it's consistent across the district.
So you, so you would see that as a need?
Yes.
Something for us to like programmatically figure out?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and maybe making the in-school suspension classrooms, one of, and we got this from someone else, but we really liked it, is that that's a restorative classroom.
Yes. I want to call it, yeah, a restorative classroom, yeah.
But we are struggling with keeping staffing. The pay is low at these positions.
And, and I recall, I do recall hearing that. And that was one of the things last year that I was trying to advocate for is, as we're looking at, you know, we were looking at pair, you know, teacher assistant pay, looking at, and that was one area that I feel like we need to-
And I, and, and Dr. Walter has said that several times too about our, you know, our pair is in special education.
Special education, yes.
And not only during the year, but, but also summer school. You know, the, the rate is, you know, we, that's something we're looking at this budget season.
But we, we, of course, we always welcome any in-school, you know, intervention. I mean, like you saw on your data, like the list, I mean, like just our loss of privileges. I would like to see that used more. Our community service, we have some options here, classroom removal. We have options that I feel aren't used enough, that we need to keep them in school. So, you know, some principals embrace it. Some principals get them cleaning and get them, I mean, you know, we're going to try anything we can do. You know, I always say when we train, we want to, we want to issue out the amount of discipline that's going to change the behavior. We really don't need any more than that. So, you know, if, if that is loss of computer time for an elementary school student, if it's, you know, whatever we can do to keep them in school, absolutely. But the in-school suspension is something I know desperately the high schools probably need help with. You know, because the, the kids are older and, you know, it's, it's high school. And so keeping them engaged in a room, you know, all day, it takes a special person. And when we have one, it's fabulous and it works. So if we could copy that and reproduce it on every high school, then we could see, hopefully, the number of suspensions go down. Because anything that in-school, bus suspension, loss of privilege, community service, class removal, detention, ISS, those are all things we would love to see go up. And then our suspensions go down.
Agree that having a strong school culture will help with, with that, with the ex, high expectations. This is-
Absolutely.
Yes. Which kind of goes back to my comment earlier, that when you look at every aspect of your day, from the time they come on campus until the time they leave, and look at those systems, it helps to create that positive school culture and makes children feel belong. And, you know, if you have people that are greeting them by name and, you know, it's-
Teachers at the door.
Teachers at the door and all those things. It leads to a very strong school culture where everybody feels that they're important.
We want our children to be missed. Like when they're not there, we want someone to miss them. And we want someone to say, I missed you yesterday. You know, because we all know the teacher of the room that they never cut, you know? They never, and so if we could just clone that teacher, you know, they just would, you know, maybe others, but not that class. It's something different, something special in the room, and they would be noticed if they didn't go.
Let's work on the teachers of the class that they want to miss. Uh huh. Mm-hmm. I mean, it definitely goes, it trickles down, you know? So that's very important.
So for training, what trainings are we providing to teachers to mitigate implicit by, on classroom biases?
So, I mean-
Relates to discipline. So, you know, defiance and disruption are two different things. And that can be interpreted differently by a different teacher.
As far as we're concerned, most of our time is spent with, working with the administrators and then there to go back and, you know, put those things in place. There are wonderful trainings that go on in Norfolk Public Schools all the time to address just that. And it's just, you know, making sure that it gets to teachers as well. And I think that we do a good job with that.
Do you offer any specific professional development in that area for our teachers?
So we do. So Ms. Smith offers that diversity training with, with teachers. And that's a part of that, talking about implicit and explicit biases and, and other points of that. So we do offer that.
Excellent. Thank you.
The training, that particular is, is done by the principal. But I have gone to an elementary school when they invite me and they want to come, you know, want me to come. And I've done training with teachers on referrals and what's the difference between an office referral and a teacher referral, and office managed. And they've asked me to go, and we'll definitely, anything we're asked to do, we're gonna, we're gonna do it.
Dr. Paul, do you, as the superintendent, if there's a school that has a high disciplinary rate, just looking at numbers here, like we can look at Granby and Southside STEM, do you put action plans in place for the administrators to bring those numbers down?
So the executive directors work with them?
Oh, the executive director, okay.
Yes, sir.
Um, yeah. So are we, and if, are we going to talk about alternative education?
That's next.
That's next. Okay. All right. So just wanted to be sure where you, yeah. Okay. All right. Well, then the, the last piece is, so I know in our strategic plan and also with our non-negotiables, but we, we, the safety and climate, there are measures in there that are obviously, you know, tied to discipline. How do you use the data from that, that you're monitoring through that to, I guess, guide the practices?
So, you know, the data we look on that is the amount of students who don't have discipline, as well as the amount of students with short or long-term suspensions. So those, those data pieces are monitored throughout the year. Those are the pieces that are monthly sent out of our DSS office. The, you know, principals have access to that through Power School as well. And those are expectations of growth as well as academics.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Now, we have, we'll move on to agenda item 2.02, alternative education update. Dr. Valerie Griffin.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, School Board Chair Decalagero, Vice Chair Thomas, Dr. Paul, board members, and members of the public. Thank you for the opportunity to present an update on Norfolk Public Schools' alternative programs, Open Campus, Madison Alternative, and our need for an overage program for middle school students, specifically those in middle school who will turn 16 before the end of their eighth grade year. These programs are designed to provide critical pathways so that every student has the opportunity to succeed and graduate. This aligns with Norfolk Public Schools' board policy that emphasizes ensuring equity and providing pathways for all students to graduate college, career, or military ready.
Dr. Griffin, you'll have to use the mouse and scroll because you uploaded as a PDF.
This is a PDF.
Is the mouse-
Got the mouse up? He's, he's bringing it.
I don't get this. I know y'all do that.
Y'all don't get that talk?
I, I do.
Okay. Why Open Campus? Open Campus was established to support students who may not thrive in a traditional setting, but still want to, want and deserve the chance to graduate. It provides a unified approach that is flexible, supportive, inclusive, and empowering all at once. The program offers afternoon attendance four days a week with an option for one virtual morning day, giving students the flexibility to balance school with family, work, or other responsibilities. It is supportive through teachers who provide remediation, small group instruction, and one-on-one help, while wraparound, while wraparound staff ensures social emotional needs are met. It is inclusive because students from all five high schools participate with a focus on serving historically underserved groups. And it is empowering because it restores hope, helps students regain confidence, and allows them to accelerate or self-paced their learning while taking ownership of their academic journey. Together, these elements show how Open Campus is a comprehensive pathway designed to meet the student's whole need and keep them on track to graduate. For a period of time, due to unforeseen circumstances, the roles of site coordinator at Madison and Open Campus were combined, with one person overseeing both programs. While this arrangement ensured continuity and support, it also temporarily limited the ability to expand. Currently, Open Campus serves about 75 students at a time, with each high school able to place about 15 students. We are looking, we are looking to expand opportunities by reopening a morning session in addition to the afternoon session. This would allow us to double the capacity and serve significantly more students. We already have a site coordinator dedicated to open, excuse me. We already have a site coordinator dedicated to Open Campus. With Madison now having its own site coordinator, as we have interviewed and we are in the process of identifying that person, this structure will allow us to restore the morning session at Open Campus and more effectively meet the needs of students. Enrollment across the last four cohorts show Open Campus serves a diverse student body, with the majority identifying as African-American, with representation from Hispanic, white, and multiracial groups. This reflects the city's demographics and reinforces the need for equitable, culturally responsive programming. Additionally, attendance texts at each of our high schools and staff from the Department of Student Services are actively monitoring and following up with students when they are not attending school at either Madison or Open Campus. This system of follow-up ensures students remain connected and supported even when attendance becomes a challenge. Over the last three years, Madison has served approximately 750 students, averaging 200 to 275 students a year. These numbers show both the scale of need and the importance of sustaining strong program structures. At Madison and Open Campus, the focus is on the whole child by surrounding students with academic, social, and emotional supports. Counselors, behavioral specialists, and social workers play an active role in helping students manage challenges while staying on track academically. Teachers receiving ongoing professional development so that they can consistently use effective practices, approaches, and targeted interventions that are effective for our student populations. In addition, strong partnerships with curriculum and instruction ensure lesson planning and instructional quality are aligned, while student wellness and student support services address the social and emotional well-being of our students. We also recognize that family and community is a critical part of this support network. Looking ahead, we are exploring enhanced mental health services, deeper family involvement, and more community mentoring opportunities. Together, these efforts will remove barriers, build resilience, and help students believe in their ability to succeed.
Can I ask, can I ask a quick question?
Mm-hmm.
That I'm, I'm slightly-
That I'm slightly confused by. When you're talking about the cohort year, if you went back up to enrollment trends, is, when you talk about Madison, well, enrollment by ethnicity across cohorts, is that the Madison group and the Open Campus group together?
So the cohort, let me go back and make sure that I tell you correctly. This is Madison, over the last three years Madison has served approximately 750 students, averaging the 200 to 275. I want to say one of the slides here also has the attendance for each of them separately, but the co. Is this the one here?
So like the enrollment by ethnicity across cohorts, is that talking about the two groups together?
This is talking about the two, this is talking about the two, this is called Madison, I'm sorry, this is Madison and this is enrollment over time, Madison versus Open Campus. Right here, yes, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were saying.
I cleared that.
Any, was there another question?
I just had a question about. What is the. Ask, how are enrolled students performing in comparison with their cohorts, their counterparts that are in the traditional.
Recommend we finish because there's some, there's some information on graduation rates to come still, so if we can just hold until the end, that'd be helpful.
I just didn't understand that previous slide, that's all, I'm sorry to interrupt.
We're on slide five.
Thank you. To give a clear picture of impact, we look at Madison and Open Campus separately, since each serves a different purpose, but both contribute to keeping students on track. At Madison, outcomes from the last four cohorts show that 65 students earned diplomas. 300 of those students are still enrolled in Norfolk Public Schools, 77 of those students are no longer in school, and 28 have earned a GED. Madison is a placement-driven program and students often assigned here as a consequence of disciplinary actions. Yet, with the structured expectations and support provided at Madison, students are able to make progress and reengage with their education. These outcomes underscore the importance of Madison as a program that gives students the second chance, structure, and encouragement they need to stay connected to school. At Open Campus, the program's citywide reach is evident in diplomas earned across our high schools. Granby, 18, Maury, 13, Norview, 10, Lake Taylor, 4, and Booker T., Washington, 18. Each diploma, recommend, I'm sorry, each diploma represents a student who persisted, a teacher who guided or encouraged, and a family that partnered to keep that student engaged. These numbers demonstrate that Open Campus is more than an alternative, it is a true graduation pathway for students across the city. Looking ahead, our focus for both Madison and Open Campus is to deepen instructional practices and strengthen family-school partnerships. By doing so, we aim to increase the number of students who finish with a diploma and a clear path to their future. Students who turn 16 while in middle school face a high risk of disconnecting from education. Research shows that retained middle schoolers are far more likely to drop out and national studies confirm that overage, undercredited students rarely graduate without targeted supports. This year, we are researching ways to support these students by developing a comprehensive program. A committee of stakeholders, including administrators, student wellness staff, student support services, counselors, and site coordinators have been formed to identify what supports are needed. The goal is to establish a central location where students can receive instruction and resources in a structured setting. Our vision is to house these students on the Open Campus side for access to online coursework while also providing in-person instruction and supports on the Madison side. This combined approach will allow Madison and Open Campus to work together to meet academic, social, and emotional needs. Ultimately, the goal is to help these overage middle school students transition back to their home schools and successfully complete their diplomas. Long-term, this initiative will allow us to better prepare students for graduation and post-secondary opportunities, ensuring they remain engaged in their education and see a clear path to success. By gaining early high school credits, consistent counseling, and wraparound support, these students will enter high school with a greater confidence, a stronger sense of belonging, and a momentum needed to stay on track toward graduation. In closing, Norfolk Public Schools is committed to expanding opportunities for students across, students through Madison, Open Campus, and our efforts to support overage middle school students. These initiatives are critical to advancing our district theme, Vision to Victory. Together, we will continue to keep equity, engagement, and graduation at the center of our work, ensuring that every student has a pathway to success. Thank you for your support, I will now take any questions.
I missed, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
So with overaged middle school students.
Yes.
Are you suggesting that they attend Open Campus with the older students?
Well, they won't necessarily be with the older students, they'll be housed in the same building to receive some of that individualized support that we offer on the Open Campus side, but they will not be with them.
My concern is.
But they're already high school-aged at this point.
Right, but they could be 16, but their maturity level might not be. Because they have been in middle school, surrounded by other middle school students.
Well, in some cases, what we found is we have some students that have not been in school for several years and so when they come back to us, they are 16. And so at that point, we are faced with a dilemma, do we put a 16-year-old that's in the sixth grade, back in sixth grade, or do we put them in high school as a ninth grader with no foundational skills?
And for some reason, I thought this was a discussion years ago that we had.
We did.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what have, we didn't resolve it then?
I, I'm not aware.
Oh, that's why, I mean, as Dr. Poe knows, I've asked for.
Which meant to speak with was the discussion?
The overage for grade.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so we, it is, it is something that we've talked and asked about having a review over and specifically Open Campus and how that Open Campus might address some of the things. And Dr. Griffin, you know, I think for the benefit, I was gonna ask, or Dr. Poe, you know, for the benefit of new board members, you talked about the different purposes of Open Campus in Madison and I don't, it might be a good idea to elaborate on that because I'm not sure that we've had an Open Campus update or overview for new board members, so it might be good to.
So Madison, as you heard from Ms. Plude and Ms. Hamlin, those students are there based on disciplinary infractions and they're placed there by these ladies, so it's not voluntary at this point. The Open Campus is voluntary. What happens is when we see students that are not being successful or students that have to work and they cannot be in school from seven until two, then they will apply for those students to go to Open Campus. The site coordinator, as well as the principal, graduation coach, parent, and student all come together to talk about the program and to see if it would be an option for them. Most of the time, it is a go, those students are enrolled into the program and they are supported until they graduate. When they complete the credits, they then are able to graduate back with their base school and that is a success for them. At this point, we only have the capability to have about 15 students per school and those principals use those spaces up very quickly because it's only about 75 and we only have one session at this point. If we were to open up the morning session again, which we're working toward, that will double the number of students that we have. Yes, ma'am?
Not only for behavior in school. Maybe some kids that attend Madison, is that correct?
Yes, and they are placed by the JZ, by these ladies over here. For Madison, correct?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Can I ask a clarifying question? But they, if they are, they are not physically present at Madison, so that's the part that I think we need to make clear is that they are participating electronically, virtually at. Is that with, are there students with. There are students with ankle bracelets, I mean, that's, I think the assertion.
Okay, it depends on the. So there's a law that says that if a student has a crime in the community, the superintendent has to be notified. When we get those letters for community charges, we do place students at Madison under JCAAC, that's our policy, and they are there virtually, okay? Not all students that are on ankle bracelets would necessarily have a letter, it might be because of probation violation or whatever. So they may be physically in the building, we only remove the students that have the letters with the community charges. Many times, they may go to Net Academy and come back and so they might have that, but it's because of other reasons and it's probably not a felony.
I just, yeah, thank you, thank you for clarifying that. I don't, does Ms. Thomas have other questions?
I did have another question.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
So for our students at Madison, we know they're referred there for disciplinary reasons, if they get a criminal charge, they, it's, you're notified and then everything goes there, some may have ankle bracelets. How do you refer to those students, as just students? Okay, alright, is that, is that how they're referred to? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that's how they were referred to. I just recall on a, on a recorded facilities call, a member had actually mentioned them and called them parolees, which I thought was very racially undertoning, so.
Well, it's not, sorry, I just wanted to respond to you, sorry, didn't mean to.
Yeah, we'll get to that later.
Well, it's not, that is terrible and so I appreciate you sharing that because a lot of these children haven't even been, they've been accused of something and not convicted of it yet.
Right, right.
So they're still not proven guilty of anything, so I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, no, and I, I think.
Call our students that.
Not at all.
Yeah, those are our students, right? And I think that's why you're bringing that up is because that, we're setting the tone that that is not how we refer to our students. So, yeah, go ahead.
And I just have one more thing, even though that was just on that, that we don't address our students that way as parolees. They are students, they are, they are our, they are our treasure, so let's make that abundantly clear so that everyone can hear that from the mountaintops. And any, anything else is inexcusable, unacceptable, and we will take care of that as a board and handle that person.
Absolutely.
With them, but I want to commend you and your staff because y'all got perfect attendance, so that's a good thing. I saw it on the Norfolk Public's website.
Yeah, they celebrated them.
Congratulations and celebrate that, I mean, that's worthy of making sure we getting them there.
Right, absolutely, absolutely.
Yes, we're getting our students there on school and on time and they're staying, so that's.
And the teachers work very hard at Madison and Open Campus and all of the staff. Student Wellness is working with us this year to increase the number of supports that we have there to assist these students as well. So I'm really excited about the possibilities that this year may bring.
I, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I have a question.
I'll go ahead.
Back to the overage middle schoolers, do we have capacity for them at Open Campus right now?
We absolutely do, I actually spoke with Mr. Fraley to ensure that and we do have enough class space to have those students to be there.
What do you think is the number of students?
Right now, we have 13 students that will turn 16 before the end of the school year that are in our middle schools. Absolutely.
Because I know you said if you had, were able to reopen the morning session, you'd be able to double the number of students that you were serving, but you've already taken into account.
Yes, ma'am.
For these middle schools, okay, thank you.
That's same space, because you'd have a morning session, afternoon session, so, yeah, so it would work out well.
Ms. Moore, you had, had something?
I have several, but. Okay, so, so can we say that Madison, the supports, are we fully staffed at Madison? Can we say that?
We are fully staffed at Madison, yes.
Okay, okay, and I guess I say administratively, do we have a.
Have made a right, do we have a minister?
Well.
Have administrative assistance.
No, they don't have administrative assistance, but our coordinator has been on leave.
Okay.
So we're in the process of hiring someone else currently. So we have, we do have a, we did convince former principal Sharon Phillips is back and working in that role right now at Madison to help us out. So, she's whipping us into shape right now, I'll just say that publicly, yeah.
I'm sure she is. So how does the district, I can't read my own hair right, how do the district address students that come to Open Campus with learning deficits? Because they are on a program, right?
Yes, but they receive the same, if they have an IEP, they receive the same supports as they receive, receive in the base school. They do have someone on site that supports them directly from learning support and I know that, that the site coordinators or the senior coordinators do go out to the school to support them.
Come back to me. Some of mine's were answered already.
Yeah, you sure? So I'm really, so I got excited to hear about the expansion of Open Campus and doing some more innovative programming for students that just need a different pathway for, for learning and I wanted to hear more about it, but going back to at the middle school level, so you know, what your early warning systems look like. And I know we are, there's two groups, I think they're the overage for grade and then there are still those that are in the middle school level that are still much, very much at risk for dropping out, that may not be overage for grade, but may still be at risk. How, how are we, I guess, addressing, I mean, I know there are two, two very different groups, you know, you have the, but how are we addressing that other group that is at risk of dropping out? And like trying to capture them in this perhaps alternative setting so that they can be successful and you know, that we can meet their needs in a, in a smaller environment.
Right, so for our middle school students, again, the number of students that we have that, again, will turn 16 before the end of the school year, it seems to be rising, we do have some students that will turn 16 in the summer. And as those students come back to us, we welcome them, we want them to come in our schools. And those middle school principals work to support those students in various ways, whatever that may need. For example, acceleration could be an option, so if you have a student that, say the student is gonna turn 16 in August before they go to high school, then you may find a way to give them, help them get a high school credit so that when they go into high school, they already have a credit. So in middle school, they're working with those students individually based on the needs that they may have. As we go into high school, those students that are in ninth grade that are not showing promise or are struggling for whatever reason, then those are the students that the graduation coaches and the, and the principals are having the conversations with and they're recommending the Open Campus program. And just because Open Campus is recommended, you know, it doesn't fit every student's need, but it does open up the conversation about what is it that we can do to support these students. Graduation coaches work very hard to figure out ways to address the needs of every student and they work until the very last day before graduation to help get many students across the board. So they're looking at them individually to see how they can support because what looks good for one or works for one, of course, may not work for another.
Okay, and that, I mean, just hearing about the expansion is also, you know, you have a, I think if I heard you correctly, a task force or a committee that you've put together that has, have they met yet or are they?
We meet on October the 8th.
Octo, okay, so that's a group of, can you talk a little bit about what that group looks like?
So we have, of course, the site coordinator at the alternative school, we have administrators, counselors, we have someone from student support services that's also on that, I'm trying to think, it's escaping my mind right now, of course. But we're gonna all come together and have a conversation about the needs and how we can best serve student needs and what does that look like? And then together, we'll work through this year, because you know, we're gonna tweak it as we go along, but the desired outcome is to find something that is meaningful for students and will support them as they continue on their educational journey. So I'm really excited about that opportunity.
Yeah, that's great, I was, I've, I know that we have several students that have gone through Open Campus that would rave about the opportunity that it provided because, you know, over the years, because I've been on this since it began and sitting as a observer in the boardroom when, you know, it was Magic Johnson Bridgecape and you know, we were doing a lot of work around, we, the, the district was doing a lot of work around overage for grade and there were students that had been identified gifted, that were, had. that were, had traumatic experiences in their high school that they just could not, that was no longer a safe place for them to learn. So, so, I mean, like you said earlier, diverse backgrounds, diverse reasons for why they need an alternative setting. And so I'm glad to hear, like, focus and attention being placed on it. But I was just thinking, like, having former students that were in Open Campus, perhaps, you know, I mean, you know, just as a thought, but to kind of help them build that. But as we're talking about school closure consolidation, another reason looking ahead for what this program might look like, I think that would inform if we even, what kind of building space we need? What kind of capacity do we need? So that's something that I hope we'll have an open mind about, too, so.
Is the, is there a time limit, like a duration, on how masters of student could go through this before they complete? Well, for Open Campus?
So it depends. We have, I know last year, we even had a ninth grade. Or almost seniors. So it just varies. But however long, the site coordinator and the transitional specialist help a plan of action for that student. And they work very closely with the student and the parent. That we're very transparent about what is needed and that they're able to accomplish that in the timeframe that is set.
And they eventually would age out of the program.
That's a good question. I mean, I think they would, yes. But the desired outcome in looking at them from the beginning.
But that's why you do the planning process with the parents, to tell them what they have to accomplish in what period of time.
That is correct. That is correct.
So those students that are referred to Open Campus, is there like a, they have to meet a certain criteria? Or does, I need this student to go? I mean, do they have to meet some?
So I think there's not necessarily a criteria. I think that is what's in the best interest of the student, again. And again, for what works for one may not work for another. And that's why it was important to me last year that we involve all parties at the table, including the parent and the student, as well as the homeschool in Madison, to talk about what that looks like. A lot of times, the student will tell you, no, this is, this is not for me. And then sometimes you have students saying, yes, this is for me. And they come in and they complete their requirements in no time, and they're done. Other students, we support and we have to work with. But as long as they show up, we're going to work with them to, to help them be successful.
That's, that's where I was going. It's good to hear because I just didn't want this to be, you're going over here, but.
It's a team effort.
Okay.
Just wanted to piggyback on Ms. Moore Buffalo's question. Because looking at slide, oh, I don't know what slide this is, but the outcome and impact slide, you know, it looks like, you know, some schools have higher enrollment than others, which may be because, you know, perhaps, you know, the principal's more aware of the program and the opportunities that it provides. Can you talk a little bit about, like, the differences that are observed here?
So all of the, all of the schools, again, each of them have 15 slots at this point. And so I know as of last year, those slots were completely filled. But again, you may have ninth graders, 10th graders, you know, 11 or 12th graders. The first slide actually shows the diplomas that were received by cohort. Now, as you look, you have a disparity from 18 to four. But again, that could be various reasons. It could be a student decided to go back to their base school. Or it could be that we didn't have, you know, as many seniors during this time. So that's going to vary. And on the other side, the outcomes of students or the number of students that are enrolled at Madison, I'm sorry, I want to bring it up a little bit.
So that's not, so that graph is not.
Say that one more time.
Some of the Open Campus students opt to get GEDs? Or is that mainly the Madison students?
I think sometimes they do have the option to get that. But the desired outcome at Open Campus is for them to complete their diploma requirements. But if a student gets in and decides that, you know, hey, I think I just want to go the GED route, we will support them.
Yeah, okay, so that makes sense. Because I was looking at this and looking at diplomas. So it's not necessarily that they entered and completed in Open Campus. It was, these are just that they receive.
The ones that did.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay, so I just interpreted it a little differently.
And again, every year, there is conversations with the families and the students to see if some students want to go back to their base school. And, and we encourage that, whatever works for them.
If I can add to, so we, we actually had an IC specialist at the, the building for a while. And the numbers were so low that we moved that staff member to NTC. But the students there at Open Campus still have the option to go to NTC to have it completed. But I, I mean, I think maybe one a year might have been in the classroom here and there. It just wasn't a good use of resources. But they still have that option if they want. But our ultimate goal is for our students to get the diploma in hand.
That's, that's me with the graduation rate. We, you know, tested agenda items as graduation coaches to see what the process is.
Just need to hold your horses a little better, we will get there.
I know, we're all very anxious over there.
But absolutely. Other questions?
Doing your great work.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 3.01, Policy, the second reading of the policy discussion.
Yes, so Madam Chair and Vice Chair, members of the board, really, nothing, nothing to report. We've already reviewed these policies. It's just an announcement, they're the second reading, and they'll be on the consent agenda for the business meeting this month. Quickest item on the agenda.
All right, now, Ms. Moore, we're going to move on to future agenda items. Would you like to start with?
Graduation coach.
Yes, please. What, what exactly do you want?
Processes, or how do we capture, you know, students who are off the roll? How do we help them if there is no possibility that they're going to graduate from high school? How do we navigate that and, yeah, get them on the path to, to graduation? So what does that look like? The life of a graduation coach, sort of, if you can have it.
Clarify just real quick. So I don't think we've had the opportunity to present really much on what our graduation coaches are doing since we implemented them. So, I, I mean, when, when we can fit that on the agenda, I think a full, like, an overview and maybe have a coach come out and talk about day in the life of a coach and how are they capturing the kids back. I, I got you then, okay?
Is there a general agreement?
Yes. I was just going to say, perhaps connecting that when we do get graduation rate and dropout rate information, I think that's a perfect.
Let me just finish writing this down. Okay.
I would like, and was kind of sparked by the conversation we had the other night, but I think we're due for that. But having a specialty program, specialty choice program review or overview for the board to kind of talk about what the goals of each of the programs are, you know, how we, just all the details about the programs. And I think that would also help inform as we're about to make decisions about, you know, perhaps potentially moving programs and, and just kind of so you could hear about why it's important to, to really understand what, what they're actually offering.
Paul, aren't they about to have a magnet or something night?
Yeah, they're having an open house.
Anywhere usually.
October 9th, I think, is the, the specialty night at Norview High School. It's on the events at the Lanes.
Yeah, but.
Think we'll be worked here.
Yeah, we can attend, we'll be here.
Yeah, but one of, one of the things I think we would, would like to see us dive into is look at it from an equity lens in terms of admission, selection, how they're perform, like, and tying it to our student outcomes. You know, how they're performing. And then with the goal of the school consolidation closure, you know, it presents an opportunity programmatically. So what can we do to enhance these programs as well? So this could perhaps kick off what I see is what we had started several years ago with having a task force that never, you know, got to completion. I think they had recommendations, but we just didn't have the chance to really review those recommendations. So that could possibly, that process back off.
Board in general agree that we should have that information? Parents all the time ask. We want to come to board consensus on things we're going to add to future agenda items. What else?
We were going to address a few things at VSB, but we didn't finish the agenda. And one of them was a request for censoring board members. And we didn't address that, and I think we should address it.
I think we probably, my opinion is that we probably should be reviewing our norms and protocols. And perhaps we need to spend a workshop, give a work, give that time at a work session. Because once we've hammered out our norms and protocols, then it would make sense to talk about censoring board members. Because it would be a violation of our norms and protocols that would call for a censure. But if we don't know what all our norms and protocols are, sort of putting the cart before the horse.
Yeah.
All for the, cozy, we appoint to. I'm referring back to, with the statement from the committee member.
Oh.
I don't know what can be done, but that's just inexcusable. Politely correct them.
Our volunteers, they're not elected.
They're still sitting on our committee.
Right, but I, I mean, I think.
They're taking the space of someone else.
Things to do would be to have that conversation.
Yeah, we can have it offline in the board office.
Children with children, at any day, they still, so that remark is not acceptable.
It's not acceptable, that's what I'm saying. But I'd say the first step would.
The first step would be, would be to counsel the person.
Don't forget about it, like, take note of it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, today, there was, or yesterday, an email about, apparently, a decision was made to change the legal representation, representation for the superintendent's search to VSB. I don't.
From yesterday?
Yesterday or today?
It was, wasn't.
I don't, I don't know the email that you.
It was what we talked about. It was, yeah, it wasn't a change. It was what we talked about with the VSB for the superintendent's search process when we initially talked. They, they provide all of that service as part of the service that we've agreed to. So it wasn't a change in.
No, it's.
The email today was indicating that we needed to make sure that the lawyers from the city knew that they weren't going to be in that process.
In that meeting. It was for our closed meeting. That was, that was.
All right, that email must have come after.
I'm not aware of that email. I was asked to do a motion to enter the closed meeting, which I did. And I included advice of counsel in it. If we are not, and I said this in my email today, if we are not going to be a part of that, then that is fine. But you cannot cite that as an exemption for the closed meeting. So we'll have to delete that before the motion is made, that paragraph.
Right, and that's, that's what it was in response to, yeah.
It must have come in at like 2:00. Because I, I checked emails all day up to 2:00, and then between 2:00 and 4:00.
It was before 2:00.
Must have just missed it.
Well, the, the email was from earlier. I'm not sure exactly right now because I'm just getting here. I don't have, I'm trying to get access to stuff. The, the point of it is, is we were changing our legal representation during that process to, to the VSB. What's the cost?
That's already included in the cost.
It is included in there.
It's included in the services that they provide, yeah.
So it's not an additional cost.
It just seemed different to me. And about, we didn't discuss the cost. I didn't know that, I don't think it's been. Is an attorney, is an attorney from the VSB going to appear at that meeting to advise you? Because if so, we can include that in the motion.
This is just a meeting with VSB and the school board.
I think we're making it more.
I know, we're making more out of that meeting than it is.
It's just like our initial meeting with VSB that happened in July.
Right, it's, it's a review, it's a closed meeting to review applicants, yeah. Yeah, there's nothing legal, there's. But we're just, we don't need legal representation.
No, we don't need the attorneys in this meeting. This is not a meeting where we need legal counsel.
So it's more privacy somewhat.
Correct.
Yes.
We're maintaining confidentiality and, you know.
I just need you to, that's all, I think Colonel probably may have, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but maybe he wanted you to state that.
Right, right. It's, it's really no different than our initial meeting with VSB where we did not require legal counsel.
Okay, I, with the way that I read it, it was like we were going to change all of our legal representation to VSB.
Yeah, I don't know.
And it's just for the superintendent's search, and it's included, so, okay, thank you. And I think we need to look at the issue of citizen input at all of our meetings. We now have where they, we only allow, I won't say allow, it's not the right word. They're not on the agenda for the, like today. We don't get input, of citizen input. It's not on the agenda today, so.
Well, it's a work session. Typically, that's at a business meeting.
Why is a, why are they excluded?
Because it's a work session.
Yeah, sorry. I was going to say, right now is the time where we need to digest the information and ask our questions so that we can be prepared to vote at the business meeting. So that is why, you know, right now, we could hear them, but like, we really haven't, a lot can change between now and the next, in the business meeting. And so it's just traditionally been, and I think, I feel it's appropriate that it is at the business meeting just.
But we do vote in, in the work session.
We don't vote in work sessions. We are not supposed to, that's not, unless it's a personnel matter that Dr. Paul or the superintendent asks us to do.
We do vote, we do, but we should allow it. Maybe they can't make the, the second meeting, they could make the first. Well, I, again, it's traditional, if it's traditional, that, then we can train, change our traditions just as we can change our norm, norms and protocols and our policies.
Need a meeting to digest.
Yeah.
We need a meeting where we can ask questions of each other and of the presenters.
Discussion, right.
We have discussion, we do not have discussions at business meetings.
Business meeting is a business meeting to conduct business of the school board.
We need to work to not, yeah.
Now, we can always have a special public hearing if there is a topic that we feel like the public needs to give input on, that's.
Like additional input, yeah.
Additional input, but, you know, our business meeting is when we.
Conduct business of the school board.
And our work session is also where we're conducting business and being focused on what we need to be focused on.
And this came, yeah, this came up at our VSB retreat. That we should not be voting during work session.
Yes, right. Not, right.
Well, then should we make it a policy we don't vote? And this, this work night is strictly work? So because we have done that.
Certain things like hiring, like hiring when we're in a position where we need to expedite the hiring process, I think it's important to give the superintendent some leeway to, to bring individuals forward so that positions can be filled. I don't know.
I, I think especially in, you know, when we have vacancies, to be able to have twice a month opportunity to do hiring instead of once a month. twice a month opportunity to do hiring instead of once a month does help speed up the process. So the only thing I ever ask is if it's an HR docket for any kind of a vote. That's the only thing administratively we would do.
This exception usually runs like this time, we're just trying to get.
This should be the last one where we have it.
Yeah.
I mean, it, we, we should consider. If we don't want to do it, then that's fine. But I think the public needs to know that, why we don't have this. I don't think it's well explained, or well, or they don't, the individuals don't know, and that's why I'm bringing it up.
It's not normal practice.
The citizens don't understand some of the processes of what we do.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll say this. A work session is just what it is. It's a working session for school board members to come around the table, discuss certain topics or issues, and have an opportunity for dialogue. A, a school board business meeting is where the school board conducts its business. We, we, we take votes on financial matters, personnel matters, any other issues that we need to address at the business meeting. There are times that the superintendent will request that a personnel docket be reviewed and voted on by, by the school board, because we're trying to get people in position. But typically, a work session is just for that, for the board to come around the table and work some things out and have discussion. And so that's typically what a work session is. So typically.
I'm familiar.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that the board has, has the option of having a special meeting where it's just public comment, seven days posted, you know, for that, for the public. But typically, a work session is just what it is. It's an opportunity for us to come around the table and, and session and working, yeah.
And if we have a special call, why can't we have a, a public input then? We just had a, a meeting, no public input, a special call meeting. It's still, I don't know if we vote or not, but we're doing a select item. And if they have input, we should, we should allow it. Which, again, it's up for discussion, and that's what I'm trying to do now. It's just interject these into what we're going to talk about. And the last is, the question is, when, when we get input from the citizens at the mic or written, who tracks the answers? And I know you can't answer every one of them. That's a reality. When you get 600 for Maury's project, which I, I have them in a folder, 648, excuse, 648. I have them, but I didn't read all of them, because they were mostly repetitive. They were the same thing over and over. But if you choose to answer one, or somebody sends you one directly to, to us, from an individual, not part of a group, about a situation, how do we know that it, it gets answered? But, I mean, we, we have to rely on, on the administration to do that, because we, we forward it. But something that says we closed the loop, you know, we got 48.
The chair is supposed to answer those emails. The chair is supposed to answer emails.
And I, and I do to the best of my ability.
Voice of the board.
Okay.
Send back an email that says, thank you for contacting the school board. Your concerns and thoughts will be taken under consideration. But I'll, I'll be honest, I'll be honest, when we get overwhelmed with emails, I, I just, I, I, I simply can't do it. But I, but I, I'm telling you that I do do my very best.
Well, one person, you're human. Yeah, like a thousand emails within the last week. Thousand.
And, and, and that's the reality. But the, the ones that we, I'm just trying to, if it's sent to everybody, and, and, and some of you have been very good about, when you send a response, you, you send it to everybody. And I think that works, and, and that's good. Is that why you know? But there's so many that they just disappear, and we don't hear from them again, what, what happened. And I, I don't want to make work, but are we comfortable with the system, is what I'm saying, what, what the way we.
That is part of our norms and protocols, so that's something we need to hammer out.
I mean, if somebody emails me directly and uses my name, I absolutely will respond back to them. But when they send things to the whole board, I will say that when I do respond, I'm trying to do it so quickly that I forget to see everybody on the email. So you can put some of that ownership on me. But again, when we get, you know, this is a job that pays $3,000 a year, and all of us, pretty much all of us have, have a hustle that pays the bills. And so we, we cannot work full-time at this job, because that is really what it would take to answer.
I'm glad you said that, Sarah, because a lot of people don't understand. I got messages out of the thousand.
Before taxes are taken out.
You said before taxes.
Of all you have lives, jobs, family, you know, just trying to take care of, you know, your personal things. So when we can get to it from me, I will get to it. And I'm sure everybody, you know, around this table would say it.
My daughter decided to order homecoming dresses at 3:15 today, and my answer was, I have to get ready for this meeting. And I said, just order all four of them, and then we'll return the ones that don't work. I mean, trying to, trying to juggle a full-time job, full-time parenting, full-time school board member is tough. And we have to give ourselves some grace in this process as well.
Yeah, I was, oh, oh, I was just gonna suggest that the one thing that boards have raised is that closing the loop, you know, when we forward, you know, citizen concerns, or whether it's from a student, teacher, parent to, you know, the superintendent, it's like, just has this situation been resolved? You know, and typically, I think you've said, you said the administration is taking care of it, you know, but maybe something quick.
I can start to do some kind of a log or a return, just so you guys have it.
Something that you may want to look at.
All right. Because anytime, no, anytime an email comes to me where there's especially a student concern, or something, you know, something at a school, that, that is, that is forwarded, that is taken care of, we are working through that. And, and generally, if, if, if it, if they email me directly, the, the concerned citizen, or parent, or whoever it may be, I will reply and include the person who's going to work with them on it. So if it's like a specific issue in elementary school, it might want to be one of the elementary school EDs who's going to be there. And that way, I'm doing the digital introduction at the same time, and I'll work on a way to do a better follow-up of that internally, because I don't know if we have a good practice of that in place to, you know, that when, when it's been completed. So I think it's a good concern. And administratively, when those come up, we can do, we can improve on that process. And if anything you want to share that, please send it my way.
Well, and also, our clerk, Ms. Tanner, when she gets these, she will copy Dr. Paul's so that it could be directed and worked on.
Yeah, she does. And she does excellent job of that.
My intent was not to increase work, but to understand the process better.
It's increased.
And we, we had a, a good example was somebody complaining they hadn't gotten responses over like four or five months. But what they didn't say was, what was acceptable to them has not been, they haven't been told what's acceptable to them. And you had stepped, put out everything that had ever been done, but the person wouldn't accept the decision.
Well, yeah.
And, and there, we will get those, and I understand. And those are usually the ones that say, well, I've been doing this for four months, and I'm not getting any answer. I'm not getting the answer I want, is, you kind of have to read in, in that, into.
But if we have a follow-up, then we would know. Because, you know, we do get emails saying, I've been reaching out, no one has responded. But in the meantime, you may have responded, but we don't know. So we're like, okay, okay, we'll get to the superintendent, send him a message. You know, again, if you say you haven't, most of the time, you have responded, but we don't know. So we're just on that one side from the parent, or whoever, teacher, whoever it is. So until we hear you say, oh, no, I did respond to him, then okay, he responded to you.
And anytime you follow up, I, of course, keep my, my documents in order, so.
Oh, I know, I know.
So I will, I will definitely let you know that this is the date and the time we responded.
This time, I'm working on it.
I got you.
So we do need to talk about a potential rescheduling with city council on a meeting. Unfortunately, the city council is meeting October 28th and November 18th. They're only meeting once in the month of November. October 28th, Dr. Paul is not available. So that is not a date that I think we should consider going forward, because we want our entire team there.
Go ahead.
I, I would like to suggest that we invite them to our work session, to meet with us during our work session on Wednesday, November 5th, at a, at a, probably at a school location. So we have the space, we have the capacity for that. Now, we can, we can, we can put that out there, and we can see how they respond. But I don't think we want to wait to the 18th. And, and I'm, and they're not meeting on the 4th, because it's election day, so I can understand that. But, you know, we can, we can, we can, what?
I'm working on it.
I think on November 5th.
I was saying. On November 5th, yes, because that's a, that's a scheduled meeting for.
A scheduled meeting for us, and we could offer to host them and do it at a school location, and I think.
Yeah.
Are we firm at setting that we will have a commitment to everyone on the 15th of this month, October?
Well, I think that we are voting on the 15th.
Well, okay. So we, we'll, we'll have that done. Why not have a special call the next week? Do a special call, and see if they will reciprocate on, on a special call, a meeting just for us, not part of another thing, and do it sooner, is my point. Not, not in late November.
The problem is that the next week, some of us are attending the Council of the City Schools conference from Wednesday through the weekend.
But that's on, that's on what day? Wednesday?
The 22nd.
Well, okay. What, there's the 21st? I mean, you know, there's other days, you know, well.
Third Tuesday of each month, I have a school, I'm working. I have a school board meeting.
We can do it on a Monday.
I cannot, I cannot do that Monday.
Yeah, I'm not available on that Monday.
Well, I'm not saying that Monday, a Monday.
Oh, a Monday, sure.
Change, change the way we're thinking. We only do it on Wednesdays. Let's do it Monday. Tuesdays don't work for most everybody, or Wednesdays, Wednesday's a convenient day.
Well, see, see, that Monday is the 27th, but we do have a meeting scheduled for the 5th, so.
So we'll already be together, is, is what she's saying.
And, Madam Chair, were those the dates that they suggested to you, or were, or were we just assuming that?
I was just, because they had, they had said during their meetings, and.
Oh, okay. So they didn't necessarily say during our meeting?
Well, that's the dates that I was given, was during their meetings.
Oh, okay. So you, okay, that's what I'm asking, okay.
So we don't even know if they'll be available on the date we're talking about.
We don't know if they would be available, but I wouldn't want to, I would, I mean, I'm comfortable putting the offer out there. We can just see what they say.
And November the 5th?
Because we are not available on the 18th.
I will be here on the 5th, for sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We're all here, yeah.
All right. And if needed, you know, I don't know, are you also suggesting coming in earlier for that portion, or at our regular?
You know what? That's a good question. I don't know what we have on the agenda for that day, if we would have, or if we would have to meet earlier for our work session.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was like, we don't want to push that off.
All right. So then perhaps we need to do a special call.
Or, or do, if it's possible for the team to get together earlier, that's an option too, just putting that out there.
Well, we have a packed agenda.
So unfortunately, we are not available on the two meeting dates, the two most, two
closest meeting dates for city council. We, we cannot, we not, cannot bring our full team. Now, we could propose a special meeting date. I mean, I could try to work back and forth with them to do just a special state of the, like a school, city council meeting. Or we could invite them on the 5th, but it sounds like we have a lot of work to do on the 5th that we'd have to meet earlier to complete. Which would also make it hard for our, if we met earlier, it might, might make it hard for our two student representatives to be able to meet.
I'm still a little confused about why we wouldn't meet before we vote.
They have, they have.
Because you would, after we're done with the vote, we're done. Like, I don't, I don't understand what's to come of that meeting. This is an opportunity where they could give some input, and to, the narrative that's out there is very negative toward us, and we have been making progress, and we've been very deliberate about.
This broadcast.
Yes, we've, we've come together, and, and we've taken great strides. I'm really proud of us. So this negative narrative has to go away. And then when we show up and want their input, they're like, no, no, no. Push back. I mean, I'm just really, it's.
I, I did ask those questions. I said, would it make sense for us to continue our meeting next week so that we can present our current plan and get, you know, their input as stakeholders and partners? But they are not interested in meeting with us until we have voted. So perhaps we vote, and then we set up a meeting. We get our house in order, and then set up a meeting.
We are working, and we are committed to doing this work in the best interest of students, if it happens on the 15th, or if it happens. But we are going to be committed to doing this the right way, in the best interest, interest of students. It'd be great to have that partnership and collaborative, collaborative effort, but.
It'd be nice to be collaborative.
But, you know, it ultimately is our job to do this. So I, I support that we could, we could wait to connect with them till after we take the vote, so that we're not in this constant.
Theta flux.
Theta flux, and everybody changing schedules to kind of meet, you know, we all changed our schedule to be available next Tuesday. And it's unfortunate that that meeting is not happening now. I'm very disappointed in it as well. So I would just wait till we take a vote, and then schedule a meeting.
I think, I think that's probably our best course of action.
Because our work continues, and we're going to continue the work. And that's, that's where I, I, I don't see the urgency around it, so.
Madam Chair, I just want to echo the same sentiments of Dr. Martin. This board has been working digitally and collaboratively to come up with a plan. We have one. We're now having for public input. I would have really, I, I was very sidebarred and a little disappointed that our city council counterparts have not come to the table. Education is a part of the quality of life here in Norfolk, and is the economic generator for the city. No one will come to our city if our education system is not robust, and we have a educated labor force. So I would have loved to have had our city counterparts here, together working with us, so that the community, our citizens, those who have put everyone here, will see, well, with the exception of me, since I'm appointed, that's a big thing with everybody, that we'll have it so that they see we are all working together. We have to show a united front. This is not school board versus city council. There's one city, that's the city of Norfolk. And we have to make sure that works for all of our citizens, and that includes our children and our families. So I'm just a little disappointed that the city council did not want to meet with us to provide input, knowing that this does also affect their, their city as well.
All right. So now I need to know if we can get a motion to enter. All right, so now I need to know if we get a motion to enter into closed executive session?
I move that we, I move that we go into executive closed session.
Second.
Ms. Moore Buffalo has put forward the motion, and both Mr. Inge and Ms. Basine have seconded it almost simultaneously.
It was Martin.
Dr. Martin, I am sorry. I just heard the sound coming right there and right there at the same time.
You ready for me to read? Okay. Move that the members of the school board of the city of Norfolk go into a closed meeting for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2 dash 3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board pursuant to subsection 2.2 dash 3711 A1 of the Act. The subject covered by this exemption is the discussion of specific persons and personnel actions included for vote on today's personnel report, consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 2.2 dash 3711 A8 of the Act. The subject covered by this exemption is consultation with legal counsel connection with the specific set out above in subsection A of this motion. Basine?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Inge?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Thomas?
DeKalb Jero?
Aye.